They would.
They're all about.
But then there were files on Clay Richard.
So we heard some.
And I don't remember, it was 12:30, 10:00. Got there somewhere out there. We got there, and we have been there very long.
Yeah.
It just kind of stuck.
Unfortunately, travel. Unfortunately, travel.
Right.
Get outside of the U.S.
And I said, I'm getting tired.
Basically.
Be on that desk. You put their senders.
And they check something.
Yeah, I did. I'm working out.
I'm not seeing anything.
What's it say? The show was, it didn't feel good with the stuff they've given her.
All this.
But I think she was kind of good.
All these films.
No.
So. I've got.
They're tired.
Every.
But I can tell. Coming in, you can tell.
Her race is.
That's why I was giving it to you.
Yeah.
Nobody would find it.
Yeah.
This is something.
You're playing here.
So it's.
I got this, yeah.
See, I need somebody to see him. Kind of better.
Ready?
My head always goes, my head always goes towards. How can this be?
I did, okay. We're ready to call this meeting to order. The Plan Commission dated May 11th, 2023. I've asked Member Wilson to offer an opening prayer, and then if you'd please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we, as before, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together in this beautiful county in the capacity of as a Plan Commission. We would invite your Spirit to attend us as the events of the business unfold today. We are grateful for the citizens of this county and ask a blessing upon us all that we may be able to continue to enjoy our positions in life. And we're grateful for all we have. We recognize your hand, and we say this things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it's now time for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Stevens and a second by Member Bass. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declaration of any conflicts of interest with any agenda items by members of the Commission? Seeing none. We move on now. The next agenda item is public comment. We have, tonight on the agenda, we have some administrative decisions and a couple of legislative decisions. The legislative decisions will have their own public hearings, so if you have any comments on the Planned Community Zone Text Amendment or the Hammerhead Land Use Text Amendment, request that you wait and make your comments at that time during the public hearing. However, if you have any comments regarding Ray Nettleton's conditional use permit for a water tank or the West Winds subdivision plat amendment, now would be the time to come up and speak. Or if you have any other comments you'd like to address the County Commission, now would be your time.
I don't know if Ray Nettleton, I don't know if this is the right time or when.
No, applicant will have time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, just for the public. Okay. No public comment. Move on to item number six. This is a continuation from April, our April meeting. Ray Nettleton.
Thank you. Application number 22.062 is a request for conditional use permit approval. Ray Nettleton owns property off Old Highway Road. The Cottonwood subdivision up there, phases six and eight are too high, and those two phases can't get water because there's no tank high enough to provide the stores that they need. So Ray Nettleton has been working with some of the property owners of phase six and eight, along with his own property, to provide water to those phases. This water tank would be one of the first steps in creating the storage necessary to provide water. Staff has brought this forward over and over and over again to you. The first time, I believe, was back in December, and then it was requested at that time that Mr. Nettleton provide a geo-hazards report, a geo soils report, and then provide construction drawings for our engineers to review. After that meeting, staff verified that a geo-hazard report and geotech soils report were submitted to the county one year ago, last March, so 14 months ago. They were approved by the county geologist as well as the county engineer. The construction drawings were received by the county, we can have two weeks ago, which gave the county engineer time to review. There were a couple items that he noted on his comments, but the items that he noted were to be, could be covered with final submit of final construction drawings after the approval of the conditions. With that, staff is recommending approval, and I can answer any questions if you have those questions.
Any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
Okay. We invite the applicant to come forward if we have any questions for the applicant or if the applicant would like to address the commission.
Yeah, thank you for having me and bringing this forward. I just had two comments on the, on the staff report. There was some concerns about the mitigating the visual effects of the tank or whatever. And I, I just, if it's actually a visual eyesore for anybody, we'd be happy to paint it or put some landscaping around. But I would like to note that it is in a bowl. Nobody can see it, not from the top of, definitely not from the Cottonwoods, not from Snow Basin, not from Washington. It's in a bowl. It's completely hidden. So painting it would probably be a waste, and landscaping would be just another thing. It would probably be, and we'll have SWIP, we'll have to receive the, around the tank and stuff. And we, as owner, may elect to do that, but if you would kindly make that just a, if it is a visual distraction or whatever to the community, if that makes sense, then those conditions, we'd be happy to do that. So that's all I really have.
Okay, we can have that as part of our discussion. Any questions for the applicant?
Ray, what's it, what is the tank made out of? Is it like a steel tank or a concrete tank?
No, it's concrete. It's mostly buried, all but the first, the last, maybe 18 inches is, is buried. To keep, you know, keep the water cool and everything. I mean, it's, it, I was just driving up there, there's a tank just to the left, is it here, coming up I-84 there, and it's to be buried more than that, and, you know, it's in the hillside and stuff. Could be less impactful than that or any of the other tanks around.
I should priority know this. Are you, is it just a dirt road up to it then, or?
Yeah.
You paving it or?
It'll, it'll meet whatever the, the fire marshal and the wild land or whatever that is.
Yeah, it'll probably have the support of somebody who might love the path that ride.
But it's, it's very gravelly soil anyway, so probably just basically a gravel road.
All right.
Okay, and the engineer also brought up about a boundary fence. What's type?
So we had a pre-construction meeting with Cottonwood Mutual and just went over their requirements, and they said just match what they have around their middle zone tanks, which are sitting on phase eight now, and that's basically a six-foot tall chain link fence, and that's, that was their requirement, just to keep, just, you know, people from that to the tank.
Is it, is it black? I, I know the one at Rollins Ranch we approved was a black chain link.
They did not specify that. They said just match what's around the middle zone tank, which is just galvanized. And again, it's, it's, it's much less visible than that existing setup. But as the owner, you know, we were not necessarily opposed to it. We wanted to look nice. But we prefer the option, I suppose.
Well, part about this doesn't meet the IFC, the National Fire Code.
There's nothing about the IFC.
Some, this memorandum from Mark Miller talks about, needs to be labeled private access road to require that the county has no responsibility for the road maintenance because it doesn't conform to IFC.
So the construction drawings don't provide detail on the type of road, but it is a gravel, and we do private, we won't provide no maintenance. So it just has to meet 75,000 pound abras. So a fire truck could go up there if it needs to.
And that's it?
And that's it, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about Mark's stuff, too. It says that his review is based on a set of plans that's 40% complete.
That's correct. That's a, that's approximately a preliminary plat. I've got a plat that's provided to us, and the construction drawings at that time are approximately 40% to 60%. The amount of money it costs to get from a 30% to 40% plan to 100% plan is a lot of money. And so at something at this stage where it's just, he's getting approval for the use, the entitlement of the use, you know, he doesn't need to submit a full 100% construction drawings.
Okay.
Before he proceeds any further, he'll have to give those plans to 100%, and then we will review the full construction drawings and have fire, fire department sign up on what's proposed for the road, as well as the fencing and the tank, if you require to paint it, that all has to be shown on the final construction drawings. And then we'll hold a, hold a pre-construction meeting. Right now, this is just for him to get the entitlement to be used to go there, and so the 30% to 40% of the 60% plans is different.
And so it's under our discretion to say if he needs to paint it or have a different type of fence?
Right, so since it's a conditional use permit, it's permitted conditionally, and those conditions that can be added have to reasonably mitigate an anticipated negative
All right, okay.
And the key words are reason.
Well, it seems like it's in a hole to me, so I don't see any, anything to mitigate there necessarily.
Those stipulations I added on is options for you to include or not. It's completely up to you if you want to include them or if you don't.
Is this, I should know this, and I don't, Ray. Is this for culinary water?
Yes.
Don't you have to coat that concrete so that doesn't?
No, I actually asked the engineers that question, and they said the.
That's okay.
That concrete will hold up for 60 years, just as is.
Jeremy, can you get a screen up there to type? Before we begin our discussion, the, I'd like to have the, at least one finding of why we are approving this, and so could you put a finding?
From the staff report?
It'll be part of the motion when we say with the findings and conditions, but I, I would like to add a finding. So if you can get a blank or put it somewhere. Put, put a finding that any reasonably anticipated detrimental impacts can be mitigated. I think that's a generic finding.
You could also add a finding that the applicant complied with the prior conditions, previous requests to provide construction drawings.
Okay.
I found that, so now the, another.
Yeah, there, I couldn't find them, so.
I'll bring it up.
So, yeah, that any reasonably anticipated detrimental impact can be mitigated. And Josh?
Yeah, and the other, that the applicant complied with the prior conditions, previous requests to provide construction drawings. Provide construction drawings.
Yeah. One condition I'd like to see added is that the county engineer's comments will be addressed. I mean, just that standard. And then we need to discuss fencing and.
Also added the stipulation that all local, state, and federal lots are.
I think that was in there. Yeah, that one was there.
It's already there.
Yeah. Well, the property adheres to all county, state, and federal requirements.
So Debbie, just the way that's worded right now, then it would, it would absolutely, as I understand it, would absolutely require the painting and the landscaping. But if it's deemed that it's not a potential impact, would it be optional, optional to do those, the, the painting and?
The engineer didn't talk about the paint. That was planner.
Oh, oh, okay. But it references the staff report, right?
No.
I'm talking about just the engineer's comments.
Yes, I know, but up in the, up in the body there, it says, based on findings with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Yeah, we're going to go over the conditions and decide if we want.
Yeah, we, we'll add.
Yeah, the findings, the staff had recommendations to look at.
He didn't list them, they weren't listed. It, it talks about the brown and green to blend in, but we can, so.
Are any of the other water tanks painted up there?
Not that I know of.
I don't think they are. I'm fine with it not being painted.
Over in the Highlands, they're not, they're not painted.
I think Wasatch Peaks painted theirs, but.
I think PR painted theirs.
They, these, there were more visual.
The ones in the Highlands are, the other ones around the Cottonwoods are. A bike passed them.
I think we could scrap three.
So if you want to delete condition number three that was already in the staff report, I don't know how you.
It was just in the recommendations.
Oh, well, it said with this conditions, with the following conditions.
Okay.
I, I don't know how to, or deleting condition number three in the staff report, maybe just say that.
Do what?
Deleting condition number three in the staff report.
Yeah.
And then the fence.
Well, number two, too. I would say the landscaping. Especially if it's in a bowl, and I don't think there's landscaping around the other tanks either.
No, not only in the Cottonwoods. Again, Wasatch Peaks is, but yeah, in the Cottonwoods there isn't, or Rollins Ranch.
I'd say strike two and three, personally.
Okay. Got it? And then the fence, just a chain link. I know in Rollins it's black, but should we just make it that it needs to match the other fencing in the Cottonwood Mutual water? But yet, so is Rollins Ranch, though. That's in Cotton, or it's not in Cottonwood. Maybe Gardner's on that one.
I don't remember that one, because the one in Rollins, wasn't they going to pump up from?
But that was a black one, so what? Do you want to have a preference?
I could just.
I would have figured out in the public, but where it's, I don't really have a strong opinion on.
Okay.
It'd almost be nice to not have a color that blends in more than.
Just have the gal, the chain link, just galvanized chain link.
Let's see, that's less intrusive than.
A colored wall.
Than a colored wall.
Well, yeah. So.
I'm fine with no colored fence.
So you have galvanized chain link, okay. Any other conditions?
What's the deal with condition one?
So right now, the tank is proposed to be on 40 acre parcel, but Ray Nettleton has plans to further subdivide his properties going forward. You don't need 40 acres for a water tank. So I would imagine that the time he subdivides the rest of his property, that 40 acres, he's going to carve out enough land just for that water tank. And our code allows for parcels that are smaller than the zoning allows, because it's a, it's for uses public to.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I, my only questions.
Any more? Discussion? I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval to the County Commission for the Nettleton Conditional Use Permit Amendment, application 22.062, located serial number 07-005-106, and parcel ID number 00-0066-8844, near the Cottonwood subdivision, Morgan County, Utah, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report. With the findings being that any reasonable anticipated detrimental impacts can be mitigated, and that the applicant complied with the planning permission, planning commission's request to provide construction drawings, and then with three conditions, that the engineer's comments will be addressed, that we delete the condition number two and number three from the staff report, and condition number three, that they add a galvanized chain link fence around the tank with no particular color required.
Okay, I have a motion by Member Bass. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, a second by Member Phillips. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number seven, West Winds subdivision plat amendment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Plan Commission. Item number, is it seven?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number seven on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.017, West Winds subdivision amendment. This application is for a proposed adjustment to property lines between two lots of the West Winds subdivision, generally located 450 feet east of the intersection of West Powderhorn Road and West Old Highway Road in Mountain Green. Approximately the, it's, one of the lots is staying the same, so I should have said three lots. One of the lots is staying the exact same, but the lot line between two lots is, is moving northward if you're looking from, from Old, from West Old Highway Road, giving more, removing, removing the proportions of the, of the size of two lots, trading sizes, rather. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no engineer or fire comments. Staff is recommending approval for this application. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have. Is the applicant? Awesome. We have the applicant here tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
I don't.
Doesn't appear to be any? Do you have any questions for the applicant? Doesn't appear to have any questions. Pretty straightforward, so. Ready for motion then?
I have, I do have one question.
Okay.
On page one, it says lots one and three on the original plat map are being modified. Is that what page 14 is? Oh, no, never mind.
Yeah, 15's the.
14's the original, 15's the new.
Yeah. Okay. If there are no other questions?
Are we adding a finding? Oh, we already have three.
Yeah, we got two conditions, yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move, we bore a positive recommendation to the County Commission for the revision to, oh, hold on. Wrong one. I move that we recommend approval to the County Commission of the West Winds subdivision plat amendment, application number 23.017, generally located approximately 450 feet east of the intersection of West Powderhorn Road and West Old Highway Road in Mountain Green, dated May 11th, 2023, with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Member Stevens. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then to item number eight. Planned Community Zone Text Amendment.
Can I request that we move the hammerheads ahead so we can leave the item that's going to generate the most comment to the end? Would that be possible?
That's fine. So if we want to move to, to number nine, on the Hammerhead Land Use Text Amendment.
Thank you.
What do we have a lot to say about this one, too?
So item number, previously nine, not eight, and tonight's agenda is for the application of the 23.011. The Hammerhead Text Amendment. This is an amendment to the Morgan County Code, modifying sections eight dash 12 dash 44m, talking about streets, private lanes, and driveways. Staff received direction from the County Commission to amend the Morgan County Code to allow for Hammerhead street design at the end of private streets. It was originally asked for more than just private streets, but through discussion, we kind of ended up just leaving it at, at just private streets in the definition in that code. This is after a fire, fire department request for this adjustment to the code. Staff found that there is a discrepancy in our code as it relates to private streets and the total pavement width when compared to the adopted street designs. Street design standards show that two feet of the, of the shoulder on each side is to be paved, and our current code does not reflect this. Staff is recommending approval for this text amendment to the Plan Commission tonight, and Josh and myself can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff? I had one, I'd like to also see it for private lanes and access easements be able to be used there, just not on public streets. This one's just regarding private streets, but we also have private lanes and access easements that could probably benefit from this. The Plan Commission.
So like, remind me, the difference between private lanes and driveways is, what's the difference between those two? You guys remember that? I don't. You guys remember that? I don't.
Yeah, so private lanes have a minimum width of 26 feet wide. That's the total right of way.
Okay.
Twenty feet of that has to be paved. It has to be designed so that it supports the 75,000 pound.
Fire.
Thank you, fire apparatus. Private lanes can only be used in certain circumstances with regards to the size of the subdivision and the size of the lots. Or if properties have shared driveway, the shared driveway, if it's shared by two or more properties, they have to develop their driveway according to that private lane standard. And then you have agriculture properties that are allowed to access through access easements. And the access easements, I want to say 20 feet wide, but I can try to look that up, get the exact dimension. But all of them are private, and I think Commissioner Chair Sessions makes a good point. Those probably should be added in. I wrote it for private streets because that's what the fire department has for.
On the private street, how far before they have to have the hammerhead though?
So our code requires that dead-end streets can't be longer than 750 feet, unless the fire department signs off on it and the County Commission approves it. There was one subdivision that came through, two months ago maybe, Legacy Hills Phase Two. They were proposing a dead-end street that exceeded the 750. So instead of the Planning Commission being the decision-making body, I made you the recommendation body and took them to the County Commission because the County Commission is the only body that can approve with the fire department's acceptance of a street longer than 750 feet. So streets can be longer than that, they just need additional approval.
So like, with these, and 750 feet is where they have to have it? They don't have to have it up till then? That's what I'm getting at. Where's the, where's the hammerhead have to go in?
Well, the hammerhead will go at the terminus of the private street or...
No matter how far back it is? If it's 100 feet, 200 feet, or...
No, the fire department, in order to recommend approval of a street that goes farther than 750 feet, will probably require additional turnarounds. Like Legacy Hills, they have additional turnarounds at other locations along that road, not just at the terminus of it.
Right. Yeah, I guess, but I guess what I'm saying is, once you leave the main road, how far is it before they're required to do it?
According to our code, 750 feet.
So anything before that, you don't have to have it?
And in fact, you don't need a secondary access till you get to 30 single-family homes, according to fire code.
So I'm trying to read between the lines. What, is this to just kind of eliminate so many private lanes and streets? So they share? What is your, what's the thinking behind this?
The only thing behind this is the fire department said that they prefer hammerheads to cul-de-sacs. And cul-de-sacs, they chew up a lot of land, and sometimes there are locations in the county where a cul-de-sac wouldn't work because of the slopes, and the hammerheads would work. Our code currently doesn't even allow hammerheads, so those developments need to have a cul-de-sac. But this would provide another alternative for properties that are proposing private streets. That's, that's the only reason Dave Rich came to me in the first place. And the County Commission requested.
So you're saying add what, Debbie?
Yeah, the code amendment also allow hammerheads, or be amended to allow hammerheads on private lanes and access easements.
Can we just add that to number five?
Let's see.
In the text?
Yeah, I can add that text in there.
Private streets.
And private lanes.
Access easements of private lanes.
Private lanes and access easements. I can add that directly into the text before I take it to the County Commission. I mean, they can add it as a condition. I'll just put it in the text before I take this to them.
Josh, just so, from my own personal understanding, when you said 20 feet of paved, is that coming off the road to the lane? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, so if, if you own property off Old Highway Road, and you're going to divide, and you're going to put in a private lane to serve the properties according to our code, then that private lane has to have a minimum of 20 feet of pavement along...
Wide.
Twenty-six feet wide. There's got to be a 26-foot wide area kept clear. Only 20 feet of it needs to be paved.
Okay, alright.
So like, you take Morgan Valley Drive. Morgan Valley Drive actually has a right of way in a lot of areas of 60 feet. But there's not 60 feet of pavement. There's only 24 feet of pavement.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff?
And the 26 feet is coming from where?
Uh, we, uh, just a private lane?
It's where the private lane is.
Adding the two feet.
A shoulder on.
That's paved.
So the current text says you have to have, and that's for private streets, not private lanes. So private streets have a completely different design. Private streets require 26 feet of pavement, four foot shoulders on both sides of that 26 feet of pavement, for a total width of right of way of, I think it's 36 feet. Okay? So your total right of way of a private street is like 36 feet. Within that 36 feet, you're going to have 26 feet of pavement and four feet of shoulders on both sides. Those four feet of shoulders on both sides, according to our adopted street elevations, two feet of those shoulders have to be paved. The text of our code does not reflect that. So the code, I'm updating the text to require two feet of each shoulder to be paved according to the drawings that we require the engineers to abide by.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Where's an example of a private street?
In Cottonwood, there's a private street. I don't know if it's Silverado, but, but there's a circular street in the Cottonwoods. It's only 36 foot wide.
Get to Phase Four.
And it's typically for developments where they want to gate it.
Enterprise has private streets.
Wouldn't Wasatch Peaks be?
Yeah, Wasatch Peaks did all. But yeah, Enterprise is private, Hidden, um, Fox Hollow.
I believe Phase Four.
Phase Four has private.
It is private, and then...
That gated? Is that private?
Almost positive that's private, because it's all gated. And then you've got the, I think that's still part of Phase... No, it's Phase Two, the gated community at the top.
At the top, yeah. By the roundabout, yeah.
Okay, I'm good. I just need a divisional.
If you have time, you still have questions, you can stop by my office. I have the elevations that we go by.
Okay, any more? Questions for staff? Bring for motion with the extra condition?
I can do that.
Yeah, you need open.
Oh, that's right. Need a motion for public hearing. Thank you.
Sure.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any public hearing? Any people?
Where do you go to a public hearing?
You're on second?
I'll second it.
Okay, member Wilson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're out of public hearing. Now we're ready for a motion. Emotion.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I move, we forward a positive recommendation to the County Commission for revision Morgan County Code, Section Eight, Dash Twelve, Dash Forty-four, Streets, Private Lanes, and Driveways to allow for alternative street terminus designs for the private streets, and to fix code inconsistency based on the text listed in Exhibit A of the staff report dated May 11, 2023, with the following condition. About the language of the text, for number five, be amended to allow for hammerheads on private lanes and access easements.
Okay, I have a motion by member Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll give it to member Little. A second by member Little. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we're back to number eight.
Number eight is a proposed text amendment to the Morgan County Code to add Planned Community Zoning District as an option for developers. The Planned Community Zoning District was requested by the County Commission for staff to draft and bring to them for approval. I've worked with Robert McConnell on drafting the current draft before us. I've also sent it to the County Commission twice for additional comments. Those comments have been incorporated in. The purpose of the Planned Community Zoning District is to give property owners and developers more options when it comes to developing their property to allow them to create a tailor-made zoning district in negotiation with the county. It would be a give-and-take type negotiation. And all of the required submittals would be adopted as part of the ordinance. And the narrative, the maps, everything, as adopted, would create the conceptual plan, which would need to be followed. There are items, there are text points in the code that would allow for an amendment to it. It defines what a minor amendment is versus a major amendment. A major amendment would require, coming back to the Planning Commission and the County Commission, for re-review. With that, we can go through it. I can answer questions. We can discuss.
I have a question. Why did they get rid of the PRUD?
That is a good question that I don't have an answer to. I don't know why it was taken out of the code previously. I just know, the day after I was hired, I was told I needed to draft a new code section, Planned Community.
So what is the difference between a PRUD and a Planned Community?
The PRUD, my understanding is you treat it as an administrative item, and technically, it should have been legislative because you're dealing with entitlements. And anytime you change entitlements for property, it should be a legislative decision. The Planned Community Zoning District, you are tailoring your zoning district. You are creating your own zoning district. You're going to address setbacks, you're going to address height, building, architecture, landscaping, everything.
But all that was already done under PRUD, right?
I don't know.
Not to this extent. No, no, no.
For one, I do know that for a fact. Number two, oh, go ahead.
No, you can finish.
Number two, the other difference is that the PRUD, the ordinances that I've read through, they don't, they don't define any of this. It just provided some guidelines for changing the density of the project. That being said, any negotiation that occurs between the county and the developer or property owner is going to be a give-and-a-take. So the county, in exchange for allowing them either additional density or allowing them to cluster their development, or have reduced street standards, or whatever they propose, in exchange for that, they have to provide the county something in return, whether it's additional open space, trail connections, things like that.
Who chooses that? The Planning Commission or the County Commission? Who chooses those things?
Well, it's a legislative item, so it would come to you first, and then it goes to County Commission. But I would imagine that before they bring it forward, there's going to be negotiations probably between the County Commission and the developer. Yeah.
Like, for example, Summer Ridge and Spring Hollow in Enterprise were PRUDs. They had reduced street standards. You didn't, maybe they reduced the frontage requirements. They had to provide, they provided a park, and they got a couple extra lots for providing the park, as well as water shares, if I remember right. So...
Surry Lane was a PRUD, too?
Yes, Surry Lane. We had quite a few PRUDs. But it wasn't, wasn't a zone change is how they did it. It wasn't administrative. And they just allowed them to be more flexible. They did give some bonus lots for certain amenities that benefited the community.
The other difference is, this will affect commercial and industrial and multifamily projects as well. If they want to propose something different that's never been seen before, or whatever, then they could tailor it. And the county, in exchange, you know, could ask for different things for additional density or whatever. But it doesn't just affect single-family residential like the PRUDs did. It'll allow for developers of commercial, industrial, and multifamily to request it.
Because of the way that it's written? Like, the way that it's written, that's why it would be allowed to be used in commercial?
Well, it's a Planned Community. So in a Planned Community, you would have other things besides single-family residential. And in other jurisdictions I've worked in, they don't call it Planned Community, they call it something else. But it allowed for a developer or a property owner to propose, you know, what they wanted to do on the property. It had to be in conformance with the general plan, or they were changing the general plan. But it left it open for people to draft what they wanted to do on their property. It just creates a lot of flexibility. And the way it's written, it makes it a lot easier for me to keep track of those ordinances and keep track of what's adopted.
Those ordinances would just stick with that project?
Yeah, so the zoning, the zoning district would be PC, ordinance number, and then it would include the ordinance number. And that ordinance number would include the narrative, all the reports, all the maps, all the, everything that's attached to that project would be adopted and recorded.
So in so much, you could say this actually gives the county more control?
It would give the county a lot more control. Because some of the submittal requirements deal with architecture, landscaping, parking, lighting. I mean, while they can tailor their zoning district, there's a lot of control for what, what the county gets in return.
Could we hear a public comment? Or about a public hearing?
If you'd like to do that now?
I, I do believe so.
Okay, so...
Yeah. I move to go to a public hearing for item number eight.
Motion by member Bass, go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by member Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're in public hearing.
All right, just one more question. How does this affect the amendments to existing development agreements or future development agreements? What's the real difference?
The public hearing is not a back and forth. We will write this down and we will, in our discussion, you want to know how to fix?
Yeah.
Previous development agreements?
Well, or amendments to development agreements? Or future development agreements? Is it, will development agreements go away?
Okay, we, we'll have staff address that after the public hearing. Any more comments? Oh, I forgot to say state your name, but you got Ray's name. Okay.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. The PRUD was abused by developers. They would find every loophole they could in there to use it to their advantage. And then the county was left holding the hook for roads and different things. They got higher densities and open spaces supposed to be in perpetuity, but there was no way to assure perpetuity. Now you see applications coming forward to amend PRUDs that were done in the past. That's why we got away, that's why we did away with it. I know the commission wants us to move forward. I know that there's been a lot of push for this, and that's why it's on the agenda. But this is my first view of it. I've heard it being discussed, that this was going to come forward, but this is my first view of it. And I've just had the packet to review, just like you have. It's a big text... It's a big text amendment. I would call it an ordinance, not a text amendment, but I'm not sure how that work plays out. I have a lot of little notes, so I might exceed my three minutes. I'm the only one here. I hope that's okay. The first page of the draft, under A13A010, first pick the first sentence, purpose. The purpose of the planned community zone is to provide a regulatory tool, which allows large properties in Morgan County to be developed in accordance with a specific plan designed to follow. It says large properties, but it doesn't define what a large property is unless it's defined somewhere else that I didn't see, and that's entirely possible. Okay. Sorry, I know it's not supposed to be a back-and-forth, but... That was a big thing. It was being used in small subdivisions. The PRUD was being used to do small subdivisions, and it was... It wasn't intended to be done that way. There were off-the-private streets in the PRUD. That was done away with, and then those PRUDs came forward wanting those private streets to be taken over, and they weren't kept up to standards. On page two, I think, it says, "This category is designed for comparatively low-density neighborhood. This category is designed for comparatively low-density residential and mixed-use development that emphasizes residential, single, and multifamily use, but may also include live-work options." At the end, it says, "Four to eight units per gross acre," and for the layperson, I don't know what that means, or five. You know, I like being able to tell how many units per acre, but this gives you not-to-find amount. And it's the same for village and the same for town center. And is town center different than town center that's already in your code? That's in the middle of page two. So you already have a town center zone, and then there's a town center in the definitions, and now you're entering this town center, too. I think that's going to become confusing. And then it says, "May exceed 20 units per gross acre," at the end, sections of town center. I see it a couple times when it says "may," and I don't... I know that in the planning world, they don't like to use "may." They like to use "shall," or they like it to be more definite, not to be an "if." And then, let's see, sorry, I've just got highlighted notes. Page three, approval, at the very bottom of the page, "Approval of the Development Plan Shall Be Processed Concurrently With Any and All Development Agreements Associated With The Project," which the problem with the town center ordinance is that the development agreement comes after you pass the rezone for the town center. And I think that you guys need to go back and look at that and bring that forward, and the development agreement should come forward with the rezone. And then I had a question, but I think, Josh, on the next page, four C, it'll be given an ordinance number with each rezone, if I understand that, what he said correctly. And then the site plan reviews. Site plans may be reviewed concurrently with the project's development plan or subdivision plan. And again, that's... That gives a little bit of leeway, and in planning, they don't like to have that made term be used. In development standards, open space, which was a big issue. The big thing is we were going to get open space for letting them condense their project down onto a small space. So they could get higher density in a smaller space, and we would get the open space, but then that wasn't really open space, and it wasn't designated. They didn't have anybody to donate or maintain it, so that was never a guarantee. But in the middle, it says, "Each PC zone shall contain a minimum of 20% of gross acreage in open space, which shall be designated in the applicable project plan and separately identified on any applicable final plan of subdivision or site plan." But then it goes top about 20% or 50%, and 50% shall be passive, and I just didn't understand that language. And then the yard requirements. On page five, designated open space shall remain in a natural condition, cultivated or landscaped, and properly maintained in accordance with the project's specific standards. And remain in natural condition and properly maintained are two different things in the fire world. And then it's number five, under E, said you could include zero-scape options, which causes some issues with drainage and runoff. And number four, on the next page, six, under number four at the top, improvements for which the county agrees to accept maintenance. Responsibility shall be reviewed by the applicable county agency for compliance with adopted standards prior to approval. And I just wasn't sure what that was saying, if that meant it would go to a different... Each department to speak about if it was the public works, or if it was the roads, or if it was the parks. And then the development agreement. I have a big question mark over all of that language, because to me, it seems like a very legal paragraph, that I can't understand what it's saying. So what my hopes for with my comments are, that you guys will dig down into this and review this before moving it forward, so that you understand what it is that's moving forward. I understand that it's moving forward because the commission wants it, but I want it to not be a bad thing for the county. I want it to be a good thing for the people who will use it, but also for the people who have to administer it. And then I did have another question. At the bottom of page six, amending the conceptual development plan. Amendments to the PC zone and all associated development agreements shall be treated as a rezone and require submittal of new application, and I understand that. But then B goes in to say, "But maybe not in these circumstances," and I didn't understand what all of those exclusions were and why they weren't in there. If you want it to move forward as a amendment and a new application, then it should, without a lot of exceptions. Anyway, that's my comments. I didn't like the PRUD. I didn't like how it was used. I don't like the results in the county, and I hope that moving forward, it'll be a lot better tool, if that's the way we're going. I really don't care for it. Thank you.
I'm going to go to a public hearing.
Got a motion to go out of public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. I heard member Bass made the motion. I heard member Stevens first for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So to answer one of the questions, development agreements that currently exist, it would not affect those. If they want to amend those development agreements, they would come through the rezoning process and amend those developments, just like they do now. It wouldn't affect those. Existing projects, it wouldn't affect those. They would amend their projects the same way they created them, including the town center. The development agreement section in the PC zone was included in case there were other reasons why a development agreement would be needed. I don't see a development agreement typically being needed unless it's related to a PID, which is a, like a capital improvement district, something like that, where it's dealing with the extension of utilities, and they want to do a tax increment financing type thing. I don't see... The narrative and all the reports that are required as part of their initial submittal would handle a lot of what those development agreements handled in the past. And all of those, I'm recommending be attached as part of the ordinance going forward, as opposed to be a separate development agreement. Does that...
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the difference between a development agreement and this planned community? Like, isn't the planned community thing an agreement?
Well, technically, the county's been using the development agreement process to create this flexible zoning, but our code doesn't really have provisions for it, especially since the PRUD section was taken out. So this would basically put it back in.
But then would there be a need for development agreements?
It says "shall."
I'm not thinking... Well, if a development agreement is required, right? That's what it says.
But I... Like, why is there a need for both?
I don't think there'll be a need for a development agreement unless it's utility-related. Some projects, they want, like, a WPR. Just a couple months ago, they brought forward a PID, which is Utah's version of a capital improvement district. It's to help pay for the costs of the infrastructure being put in, which allows for those costs to be passed down to future users. Okay?
So they get the money, but then the people that own the property end up paying it?
Right. So there's some tax increment financing, some way that they're able to leverage a PID, which is a public improvement district, in order to put in the improvements upfront, and then the costs are divvied out to the properties that are affected by those improvements.
It's like a loan, right?
Sort of. Sort of. I can't explain any better than that. They're kind of...
Well, that was my understanding, is basically they get out this loan, do all the improvements, and then pass the loan payments down to whoever buys the property.
Right.
They... Yeah, they bond.
And we don't have... We have one? Do we have seven?
I think we have several. I think we have a few. WPR for sure.
And you've got Rome.
And Rome. I don't know if Cottonwoods is used or not.
No, they didn't exist.
Okay.
But then the other guy, the Tor guy, remember? He was talking about that. That property on Trappers.
Oh, yeah, he wants to do a PID. Well, he talked about it, yes.
Are you talking about the Nine Springs, or...
No, no, the... On the Warner property, the Range.
Oh, the Range.
Okay.
He keeps changing on us, yeah.
So I can see a need for a development agreement of that sort, which is why I included that language. But for the most part, all those reports, all the preliminary documents, the conceptual development plan, the architecture, the definitions for lot size, setbacks, lot coverage, everything else, is going to be defined in their narrative document that's going to be recorded, so...
Okay, that first line, though, under development agreement, the O, A, O?
What page?
On page six. It says, "In conjunction with approval," and it goes on. It says, "The developer and the county shall enter in development agreements, reflecting all the conditions of approval and terms." So that first one sentence says, "They shall."
Well, I mean, we can make it a "may." I just don't see a development agreement being needed.
So why don't we take it out?
Essentially, you're doing what Tina recommended, which was the rezon, when they're doing it, you're getting the development agreement upfront.
Right.
Instead of giving a rezon and then getting a development agreement.
Well, I'm not married to it.
No, essentially, that's what this does, is it puts the development agreement upfront with the rezon.
Or does the development agreement codify everything into one, into a document? The zone plan, the CSP, whatever?
But that's already being recorded according to the previous text as part of the ordinance. All of that would be part of the ordinance that's adopted.
Yeah, that whole paragraph, development agreement, and then that notwithstanding all the weasel words.
We can take it out.
Well, or maybe just simplify. I don't like...
I think we should go through this line by line. And start at the beginning.
Take our time. I agree. This is...
Too hard to read?
Well, no, it's big. I'm sorry about the weasel words. I forgot we had attorneys. I'm sorry.
You're good. You can huddle out attorneys as much as you want.
So can I ask a few questions, I mean?
Sure.
Josh, I'd like to know what this looks like in real life. I have some ideas, but I'm not sure I'm right. So if I come into Morgan County and I buy five acres of ground, and I want to put up whatever hotels, or you're saying there's businesses involved, and stores and whatnot, under this scenario, they would have the right to come in anywhere in the county, buy five acres, apply under this proposed concept, and they can go away?
I mean, the general plan, future land use map, still guides, albeit discretionary.
Well, if there's a new chapter that outlines how they're going to develop five acres or more, how's that involved in that with the other... I mean, you're saying, "We're going to create a special district," in essence, that you can do what you want, five acres or more. So how is that being governed by other...
Well, you have your general plan, and the general plan has a future land use map.
But that's not always followed?
No, it's not always followed, but...
He's very eliminating, in my view, and I'm asking a question, but in my view, I'm saying, if I got five acres of ground, I can apply...
Potentially.
I can apply under this, and I can put whatever I want on it.
Or whatever the county negotiates.
No, technically, you'd be able to define what you want to put on your property, but in exchange, you know, the upfront cost for doing a PC district is, it's rather steep. I mean, putting together the list of items that are required there, somebody that just buys five acres and wants to put a subdivision there, they would be better off trying to rezonate to one of our standard zones.
Well, they might be better off, but they can do it under here.
Yeah, but it won't pencil. So it means, for every developer that comes in and buys a piece of property, they've gone through a pro forma of some sort to show that it pencils out according to what they want to do. And if you have five acres and you want to put a subdivision there, there's no water, right? You don't have a water company. You don't have a sewer company. Then there's no way they can do anything commercial there of any significant impact. There's no way they can do clustering of development, because they're already required by the state requirements. We've been working hard to have 1.75 acres for water and sewer. So it's limiting. The only places I see somebody coming in and doing a planned community district and actually making a pencil is someplace in Mountain Green, where they want to put in multifamily, or commercial, or some industrial development. I just, I don't see how it would pencil otherwise.
Well, I can show you places in Porterville where they've gone in. I'm like Tina. I'm open to looking at these kind of things, but I'm like Tina. I go back far enough to know PUDs and PRUDs in the county, and they were a problem, in my opinion. That's my opinion. And I look at this, and to me, it looks a lot like a PUD or a PRUD.
So did the PRUD, did it require preliminary development plan, types of uses defined? I don't think so, because I've read through some of the PRUD ordinances, and they don't.
Can I ask a question of an audience member?
For him, you want?
I want Tina to answer the question. Is that so, Tina? Did people...
The history of it.
The PUD and the PRUD, Cottonwoods had a development agreement, it wasn't PUD.
Right. But in answer to Josh's question...
How was it these days?
Well, as I understood, he's saying there's no way that you can put those kind of things in there without proper infrastructure, streets, electricity, sewer, whatnot.
Well, Cottonwoods is something completely different. The Cottonwoods was hundreds of acres. It wasn't a five-acre park.
There was a development up in my neighborhood, Elk Meadows, where they went in and bought, I don't know how many acres, but then they went in and just put in a subdivision in that neighborhood.
It was a PRUD.
I'd have to look at the ordinance that was adopted.
No, that's fine. I'm not... This is... I'm trying to figure out what would be good for the county. So I'm saying back to you, if you've got money and you want to go buy 300 acres somewhere, and you want to put in whatever it is you want in terms of neighborhoods, businesses, buildings, tall buildings, all of this is covered in here, as far as I can see. You've covered it very well. But they have the right to apply and, in essence, go around the county's ordinances, from what I read. Does that sound right to you?
It doesn't sound right, because it's still a legislative decision. It still comes to this by...
Well, you're going to the commission next, so there you go. You got your legislative...
I think he wants to know, how does this relate to the general plan? If you've got this general plan that allows...
So if somebody comes in and buys a piece of property, or wants to buy a piece of property, and they want to put commercial out in the middle of Porterville or Milton, and it's surrounded by agriculture, there's no precedent for that, because there's no surrounding commercial already. There's no surrounding industrial. There's no surrounding small lots. You have one acre along the highway, the roads. You have 820 past that. Some are R5, some are R10. So there are some things that are going to be proposed, that they're going to want to do, that staff is going to recommend denial, because it has no bearing on the general plan whatsoever.
But with this here, the zoning goes out the window.
No, they're tailoring the zoning, but that doesn't mean that they're tailoring the general plan, so...
Yeah, but if you come in for a PC and you approve it, whether it's Porterville or it's Milton, the way I read this, then the A20 is gone.
They can do whatever they want with that.
They can do whatever they want.
No, I don't see that, because if some... I don't, no, I don't see that, because if somebody comes in and wants to put in commercial in Milton, or Porterville, or, or wherever, and the general plan shows A20, agriculture, or R10, or whatever, I'm going to recommend denial, because it's not in conformance with the rules.
So, then in my mind, if you're going to do this, then we put a place where the PCs work for.
Specific areas where this would apply?
Yep.
Because it depends on the planning, or it depends on the planning commission number one, and also the county commission.
More so the county commission, because we, yeah, we just recommend...
And sometimes, they don't follow the rulebook, so this is basically saying, here, do whatever the heck you want with this property, it doesn't matter if it follows our general plan or not.
Well, that's kind of how I see it, that's why I'm asking Josh if that's accurate or not, because it seems like it is to me. They're, they're saying, in essence, from what I read, you can go buy whatever you want. I understand your, I understand what you're saying about the infrastructure, and I get that.
They can do that anyway, though, right? Anybody can make an application to...
For a rezone.
For a rezone. They can do that anyway, it doesn't mean it's going to get approved.
Right, but this gives them...
Just makes it a little more leverage for the developer.
To the question about the, so, if I understood what Josh was saying, they don't have the infrastructure for the sewer or the water, but they could go to the Cleveland Morgan Health Board, and they could, they could propose to do a PACVMA, or they could propose to do an onsite sewer treatment facility, similar to what Mountain Green is changing to right now, and they would have that infrastructure in place. That's...
Yeah, but the cost of that would be so astronomical for a five acre lot, they would never do it. It just, they...
That's, I don't, where's the five acres at? And it cannot be changed, so I don't agree with the five acres.
Yeah, I, I'm going to say, we, we can, as we go through this, we, we can adjust. Is this appropriate for the smaller acreages, like five? Maybe not. I already had a discussion with Josh, I would like a, a PRUD ordinance for smaller, people that just want to cluster, and not have to go through all this.
Why can't we just have a clustering ordinance then, instead of PRUD?
We, we could, whatever we want to call it, we, we could do something for these smaller parcels, that would allow for...
So, my...
Some flexibility without this.
My, my question is, is what's the vision?
It's a draft.
But I'm, I'm going different with it. To me, what's the vision? What is it we want Morgan to look like? What is it we want to be around us? As I read through this, it, it's, to me, it goes against what the, the general plan that we had, it goes in line with the one that they just recently did, which we...
Hated.
Hated. And this goes in line with it. I see this in the sense of promoting growth, that we're, we're encouraging developers to come, to make it easy for them to develop the ground. They're, come, they're going to take away the style of living that we like here, and that, that we're going to turn Morgan into a Salt Lake City, or an Ogden, or something like that. And I don't feel that. I don't want that. I know the people from Milton won't want that, they don't want nothing to do with it. They want it to remain in a rural sense. This stuff here, to me, increases our density, and I don't see where it's a benefit at all to the county. So, that's my opinion.
I just, and help me understand, this basically allows anybody that has this written, anybody that has five acre, more than, five acres or more, the planning commi, or the planning commission, not, sorry, county council, or county commission, I get them, words make, or names mix up, they can decide whatever they want, right? So, it basically gives them all power, anything larger than five, or five acres, that, if, if they want, or you're putting that power into their hands, and if they want to override anything with the, the county, they can.
They're the elected officials, they already have that authority now.
So, then why do we need this? If they already have that power, then why do we need to change it?
Because the planned community zone district provides a way where the, the county can require things and get things in return.
But you say we already have that now.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, the legislative body has the authority to approve rezonings that go against the general plan now. This provides the county with the opportunity to negotiate with developers that come in, and help guide the development according to what the county wants, and get something in return, as opposed to, if somebody has RM15 land, they're entitled to a certain number of units. Our landscaping is minimal, our architecture design standards are minimal, but the planned community zoning district would allow for more flexibility for the developer, but give the county more teeth in regulating it, and making sure we get something in return.
But the thing is, is use the one thing, whatever that zone for, they have that right for it. Right? So, if it's our, whatever, zoning, whatever, they get that here, so this is going to become a negotiation for them to increase...
Well, that's assuming that there's never going to be another zone change, that the county commission is going to approve. And I can tell you right now, the county commission we have now, and future county commissions, they're going to approve rezonings. They are.
But I guess to me, this is just making it easier for the developer.
Can I make a comment? So, I'm thinking back to that rezone that came up in front of the, the county commission in Mountain Green behind the fire station.
The MND Nelson.
Right? So, watching that, Bobby McConnell, as you mentioned, or said to the developer, hey, we really wish that you would have submitted a development agreement, or a preliminary development agreement with this, because there was, it was so loose on, hey, how much density are you going to put in? If I'm understanding this correctly, this is making it so that these developers have to come in upfront before a rezone change, and state what their actual plan is, instead of coming in front of the county commission, saying, this is our plan, and for, the other one that comes to my mind is Slate and Rich recently. They come in front of, they come here, go in front of the county commission and say, hey, our intention is to do two lots, but we're wanting a R5 zoning. If I'm reading this right, this is a way to say, hey, now we are taking R10, R5 out of it, this is our plan, we only want two lots, we're going to put this in writing upfront before you give us a rezone, so then it takes our need to trust them out of it, because we can get it in writing upfront before they get their approval.
And it's defined.
Same thing with MND Nelson, where, instead of them saying, well, I remember feeling uncomfortable about it, actually, when I was listening to it, because I think we all have faith that people are telling us the right thing, but if it's not in writing, it's not going to happen, that's how I live my life. In that scenario, though, they would have come forward with a plan upfront, instead of saying, our intention is somewhere between X and X number. This is allowing for that to happen in reverse, which actually is more expensive for the developer to go through upfront, but also makes it so that we have much more ability to, one, not have to trust that developers are just going to do what they could, or they can't get a rezone that would allow them more, if they only want two lots. And, does that, am I understanding this right?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the list of requirements to submit as part of the rezoning go well upon, well above and beyond what's currently required for a rezon submittal, even one that's going to town center. Typically, for current zoning, if they wanted to go to a hard zone, like RM15, or RM7, or R120, you have to submit a legal description for the property, envelopes, an application form, with a brief description of what you want to do, but you technically don't even have to include that legislatively, and that's it. But with the PC zone, they're having to submit everything upfront, including their proposed development standards, lot area, lot coverage, design guidelines, architecture, elevations, parking standards, landscaping, project lighting, infrastructure, project signage, project phasing, and then there's certain maps that have to be provided along with it. All of that has to be provided upfront, and those are major cost items for developers. So, you're not going to get somebody who wants to put in a small subdivision on five acres going through this. They, they just won't. The cost is too high. It, it won't pencil out for them. But if somebody wants to put in a commercial development, or, you know, apartments that are higher than 35 feet, then this gives them the option to do that. And in return, the county's going to get something, because we're in a negotiation with them.
How do we guarantee that we're getting that something?
We...
Well, if it's part of the negotiation, and it's part of what we're asking for in return for additional density, or additional height, or reduced setbacks, then...
But, from what I've heard other people say, that has, like, that was the case before with a PRUD, and then those things did not happen.
We didn't have this negotiation to this extent with the PRUD.
Those things didn't happen, because there wasn't anything in writing that forced them to happen. They got this broad range that came with their zoning change, and no development agreement behind it, which created the writing or the tool for the county to enforce it. So, this gives the, us the, the tool to be able to enforce what the intention is upfront. It doesn't, it makes it so that the developer can't go back and change afterwards, which is why they put in there that, you actually have to go back through a zoning change if you want to change your plan. And, so then this starts all over. But it actually makes it more safe for us to protect our communities, so that people can't do what those PRUDs did. Because I, I, for what I, when I'm selling homes, I can't tell you how many PRUDs I've drive through that have turned to absolute garbage over time, because there was nothing in place that had architectural...
Standards.
Thank you.
Standards, yeah.
There were no architectural standards, there was nothing. So, you, there's one, for instance, in Clinton, behind the grocery store. They put up these single-family homes on really small home sites, and they got their approval done on the zoning for the density, but then the exterior of them are, it's all vinyl siding, and the parking and the way that it's set up, it's awful, and you wouldn't want, you, I know not a single one of us here would want that in this community. It looks like hell. This gives, in that scenario, you could specify, before you even gave the zoning approval, hey, an architectural design plan is already in place, you're going to know the stone, all the exterior surfaces, everything is going to be spelled out before they get their rezone. So, realistically, this actually makes it way more feasible for us to have a community that we can all be proud of, the way I'm seeing it. This solves a lot of problems, because I think we're all on the same page. We all love this place and don't want it to look like Ogden, Salt Lake, many of the other neighboring communities. This, in my mind, gives us the tools to actually enforce developers to follow what they say, before giving them a rezone. And that, to me, has always been a problem there. These guys get rezones, but then there's so much latitude in, in what they, what the final product is, and that's a, to me, that is a problem. Shouldn't be. So, thanks for putting this together. I still have a lot of questions.
Remember, Wilson, you had, did you have another question?
Well, he answered some of them. I, I actually didn't realize what he was saying. I, I kind of agree with that, where this is laying out what the rules are. Having said that, I still would like to go through this with a fine tooth comb, before I ever...
If you'd like more time to review it, before I bring it back, you could recommend a continuance to a date certain, so I don't have to renotice, please.
I mean, this is kind of like the resort special district light. All the requirements that we put on Wasatch Peak, and Snow Basin, and their, and their development was all done upfront, this kind of mimics that process. And it's negotiated.
We already can negotiate, right? I remember back when Dave was on the commission, he used to love to do that. Has that been gone? Has that been taken away from him?
Well, the PRUD allowed some negotiation, and since the PRUD went, there was, there's no negotiation in standard subdivision. If they meet the requirement, you shall approve. For example, Whittier Estates in Peterson, we could not negotiate a trail along the river, because the PRUD was not there. So, now, there's no trail along the river, it's just a standard subdivision. So, that's a missed opportunity, that eventually, as land is developed along the river, you could continue that trail, so there, there's actually a, a good amenity for the community, but...
So, if somebody came in, Debbie, we, as a planning commission member, we have no right to request something, there's nowhere in the county that it says...
Only what's in the code.
Which is unfortunate.
And we could change the acreage, and can we also change the locations?
We can change...
You can recommend changes?
We can change anything we want.
Yeah, you can make recommendations.
Because based on the discussion, I feel like this is more of like a residential deal, not a commercial.
I wrote it for residential, commercial, and industrial, so I will make that recommendation to the county commission, whether you change it or not, I'm just telling you upfront.
So, yeah, we, we can go over this, I, you know, we're not going to get to a resolution tonight, by no means, but we can start going through it, sec, either line by line, section by section, with any concerns or, or changes.
If I made a request before the meeting, if you could send me a list of your questions, concerns, so that I can be ready to address those.
So, is this rec, recommendation that's here, that you've written, does this reflect, in your opinion, what the commission is looking for?
I've already sent it to the county commission twice, and I worked with Bobby McConnell on it. So, I, I'm sure they, they would take recommendations for changes. There are certain things in here that I think it needs to include, so if your recommendation is going to remove those, I'm going to recommend that we don't remove them. But, you know, I think we need to go through and...
Why did, okay, that, okay, why do they have a copy of it and we don't? Like, why did they get it first and then us?
Because that was directed by the county commission, who are the elected body. If they want a copy of it, they can ask for it, so...
I guess, why do, why does it matter what we say if they're already approved?
Exactly.
If they've already rubber stamped whatever you're going to submit to them, it seems like it basically bypasses this, the recommendation park, or body, and just basically says, I went, I went over your head, went directly to them, they approved it, and this is what they're going to do. Whatever you guys say, I'm going to take it out, I'm going to tell them what they want anyway, so it feels like you just basically just went around us.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, you can feel that way, I apologize if you feel that way. The county commission of the, is the body that directed me to draft this, I felt they should have some input ahead of time. That doesn't mean that your recommendations are going to be of more...
Well, you told us, if we recommend something, you're going to tell us, even if we took said, take something out, you're going to recommend to keep it in any way. That does tell us that you don't care.
No, that's not at all. There are some things that I think you're recommending that I don't agree with, and those things I will take forward, and then the county commission can decide one way or the other. But you're not a rubber stamp body either, so I'm not going to take something to you, and then you're like, I'm going to bleed everything out, or whatever. I just, I'm not, I'm not that type of a person. So, if I feel strongly about something, I'm going to make that recommendation to the county commission as well.
So, question for everyone, how do we want to address this? Do we want to start going over it now, or do we, you want to take this, review it, mark it up, and then we come back and say, okay, section 813A010, what are your concerns? And discuss, or do we want to start trying to discuss it tonight?
I'd like to have more time to review it. There's a lot in here. I'd like to read, do a lot more reading personally.
Let's...
I would, too. I think it'd be better to not talk about it tonight.
As long as everyone comes forward and mark it up with your concerns in each, each section, each paragraph, and then we can just go through it, section by section. For example, I've told Josh, he has this in where the old PRUD was, in, in the Title 813A. To me, it's a rezone, it should be in with the other rezones, the other zoning districts in section, in five, eight dash five, like with the resort special district, since it is a rezone. But that's where we place it.
The least of our worries.
Least of our concerns, but it is a rezone. Just in your mind, realize this is going to be a rezone zoning ordinance, not a, not a subdivision, not an administrative item.
And in keeping it legislative, it gives all of us more power.
Well, it has to be legislative, because it, it changes the...
It is a rezone, yeah.
Right. But every time... But every time, right?
Yeah.
There, it, once the development's approved, or once they come, it's not like at that point it switches to where, never mind, I answered my question.
So once a PC zoning district is approved, and that ordinance would direct all future development on that property, unless it goes through another rezone, or any amendment falls within those 10% changes, where they're minor in nature. But any major, anything over those minor amendments would make a major amendment, which requires a legislative process again.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
They're, if they're making big changes, they have to come back and do all of this all over again. So realistically, you wouldn't want, nobody's going to want us to do that again.
No.
How, how are future agendas? Are we, are they heavy, light, or can things be moved? Because this is, this will take a lot of time.
The next agenda has two items on it, but it's too, that's only going to give you two weeks to look at it. I don't know. I'd put it first meeting in June, maybe second meeting in June.
This, move it to...
I'd probably move it to the second meeting of June. First meeting, I think, has, what, four or five items on it? Yeah, I'd move it to the second meeting in June. That'll give you six weeks to review.
And maybe keep that meeting light?
Why not put it in two weeks, give our changes?
Or start the discussion?
Have a discussion about it.
Is that giving you a chance?
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I've already marked up...
And fun, I'm not making a decision on it yet.
Me...
Until...
We may have to put it into June again, yeah. So put it on our agenda in two weeks.
Okay.
So someone will need to make that a motion.
Can I get one request, just, or one request for when you do that? Would you be able to, for at least my understanding, help me understand what the current process is, if somebody were wanting to do something similar, what they would have to do today before the change would be in place versus how this would affect that process after?
They couldn't do it today?
Well, I thought you said that they could still go to the county commission and still get a rezone.
A rezone.
A rezone, according to the hard zones that we currently have. And by hard zone, I mean, you have CS, which is Commercial Service.
Shopping, yeah.
Or shopping. You have CH, which is Commercial Highway. You've got R120, Rural Residential 10, which is 10 acre minimum. So you have your, your zones. Anytime you rezone something to those zones, they have to follow exactly what our code says. There's no deviation, there's no clustering, there's, there's no negotiation. The only time there's negotiation in our code at all is if they rezone it to town center. And after they rezone it to town center, then they start the development agreement negotiation with the county. And there's a minimum requirement for residential versus commercial. And there's some architectural design standards that are related to it. But they still are required to meet the minimum town center zoning district requirements. Other than that, there's, there's no provision for the negotiation of clustering or anything. You're entitled to what you're entitled, and that's it. And this PC zone would change that, to allow people some flexibility and more opportunity for their property.
And at the same time, it's giving us the, the leverage on, when these, when these zoning requests come in, it gives us the leverage to be able to spell everything out before taking that leap of faith.
That's right. They got to submit a lot of things before they can, as part of those minimum requirements.
I'm, sorry, I'm still slightly confused. So right now, they can, they can't get any, or, or, they can't get any exceptions? This would allow them to get exceptions? But I'm slightly confused, because if they were to, let's say I went and did an R20, this doesn't change it. They could still go whatever they would have normally done with the R20, right? So in other words, they just still have to meet that requirement. If they wanted to do something alternative, they could use this as an avenue. Is that right?
So the way I'm seeing, the way I'm understanding it is, let's take the town center in Mountain Green. When they did that zoning change, they're trusting, when they did the zoning change, that the developer was going to follow whatever that town center zoning required, or within whatever was spelled out in the code. This makes it so that when those guys...
Can they, can they still do that even if we allowed or provided for this?
They could apply for a town center zoning, right? But once you give them that zoning, then they have all the latitude in the world that, within that zoning, right? So what this does is, let's say, take the Mountain Green Town Center. Before they took that leap of faith and gave them the rezone, all of, everything would have had to be spelled out ahead of time. So you would have known how many units, what those units would have looked like, what the lighting would have looked like, what the parking would have looked like. Everything would have had to be spelled out upfront before this, before they ever changed it to town center zoning. So...
Sorry, let me, sorry, and I appreciate the explanation. So couldn't they still apply for town center zoning? And in other words, it doesn't stop them from doing what they already did, right?
It doesn't stop them from applying from town center zoning. It's just that before you give them the rezone, we're able to get things in writing. And I've only seen this as long as you guys have. I'm just...
No, and I appreciate the explanation.
They have a choice.
They have a, they can still do it now.
They could still do a town center if they wanted, or they could...
Or they can do this.
Yeah. But if they, if they do this route, if I'm a, if I put myself in a developer's position, I probably don't want to go this route, because I have, I'm spelling everything out upfront. Except if I've got a really awesome community that everybody's going to like, and they really feel like the community's going to support it, because the community's not going to have it, there won't be any guesses anymore as to what's going in, once that approval takes place. It's all going to be submitted upfront. And that's what I'm liking about this so far is...
Can you replace town center so they can only do this?
So the town center zoning district exists currently in our code. We can't really, I wouldn't recommend removing it, because we have town center zones with development agreements attached to those town centers. It's really hard for me to look at these PRUDs that exist in the county and understand how I'm supposed to regulate it, because the PRUD in our code doesn't exist anymore.
But we could change the town center to require development agreement at the time of rezone.
Yeah, that's true. We could change the text to do that.
Yeah.
But then again, you're restricted to the town center zone.
Right.
Whereas this opens it up for other people who want to have more flexibility for a single-family residential, or...
Yeah, I missed.
But it could be either or.
I was just going with it. I think if, if it makes them spell it out on the front end, why can, or why don't we can make it uniform, so I don't have one way where I can get around it to the very end, and one where I can do it, or I have to do it upfront? Why not just make those conform together?
Well, there's other restrictions in the town center that they're required to comply with also. And so they may be hesitant to want to go down that route because of the...
But if they don't have a choice, if we, if we conform them all to be the same, they have to go down that route, no matter what.
At least with a development agreement.
Right.
Yeah, but then that defeats the flexibility and, I don't know. Development agreement, you have to have a minimum of 35% commercial, the rest has to be residential. There's other requirements in there as well. And, you know, developers may say, you know what, I don't want to, I don't want to spend $200,000, $300,000 preparing all of these items. You know, I, I don't want to spend that much money to get my rezoning. So they may just say, I'm just going to go with the R120 or the, you know, whatever.
So let, have a motion to postpone to this item to our next meeting.
Can I make that motion?
It's the 25th, by the way.
Just so the planning commission knows, I won't be here on that meeting.
Your input should be given to Josh.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. So I have a motion by member Phillips to postpone to the 20, May 25th meeting, item number eight, planned community zone text amendment. I have a second.
Second.
I have second by member Stevens. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's do our homework, come, prepare for good discussion. Okay, business, staff questions? I have one, one thing regarding what we did tonight on the lot line amendment. In our code, it talks about a lot line amendment is done by staff and does not come to us, but evidently, in talking with our county attorney, it needs to be done with a plat amendment. So I'm kind of going to request that staff change the code so that it complies with state code.
Okay. I thought you were going to have a question.
No, 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 just that I'd like to request that our code come into compliance, because in the past, the lot line amendments and subdivisions had just been handled by staff. Our county attorney suggested that it not be done that way, that it be done by a plat amendment.
Well, if he suggested it's only because state statute requires...
That's what I'm saying, they had to comply with state.
So platted lots is required to go through plat amendments.
So we just bring our code in, that should be a simple deletion?
Right.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, approval of the minutes?
Sorry, one question for you. Just going back to our previous discussion, just, or question would be is, or, and I don't know how the process works, so I'm asking, or asking how do, is, could we make the request that we, or in conjunction with this, that we also require on the town center to have them do the development plan ahead of time? Are we able to do that as a body, or to make that recommendation at the same time, or not?
If you want co-change, you can direct, we can direct staff.
As a body, you have to make the motion to both, but you can direct, the planning commission can direct staff, county commission can direct staff, or a private citizen can re, submit an application and go through the process by any date. Those are the only three ways that text can change that, and I can't do it on my own.
So you'd have to be a topic here to do it?
Or we can do it in business.
And make a recommendation to Josh to do that.
Yeah, we can direct staff in, in business.
Directing to do it.
And you, you want it done formally as a motion, rather than just a consensus?
Yeah, I think for planning commission, it's got to be consensus.
Consensus, or with a motion, formal?
Or a formal motion.
Okay. Well, I'd like someone to make a motion then, that we amend our lot line adjustment section of code to comply with state code.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by member Bass. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by member Stevens. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries. Did you, you want to tackle town center now, or wait till we get this one done?
That's what I was going to say, is there any reason why we couldn't get this one done and hold off and see how this turns out before we do that?
Yep.
That's what I was going to say. I'm not saying to, I just wanted to understand the process, and we can wait until we see how this, or how this goes before tackling that. Just wanted to understand if it, there wouldn't be any reason why we couldn't do it that way.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so now, there's no more business or staff questions. We have our minutes. And for the new ones, if you review the minutes and you see any corrections, you can contact McKell ahead of time, or you can make some corrections tonight. And so, do we have a motion? Are there any corrections tonight? Anyone have anything with the minutes? If not, take a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by member Stevens.
Second.
A second by member Bass. All in favor?
Aye. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.